Yes. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Devon?
Here.
Chair Holt, or sorry, Chair Hernandez and Vice Chair Holt are absent. Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item are the minutes dated April 10, 2018. And we, are there any corrections or revisions?
Through the chair. I believe that since Commissioner Evans was absent, we don't have a quorum to approve that, so I suggest we continue that to a future meeting.
Yeah, I think that is doable. Let me also point out that on the last page, there's some wording that I was trying to figure out what it means, and perhaps there's an error there. Under water, the first bullet, change of use of elevation appreciates the project operating in the shell of existing building could be a unit, could be considered. I'm not sure what all that means, so it's not worded correctly, so maybe that could be reworded for the next time. It just, and I'll just leave it as that. The next order of business is public comment, and this is a portion of the meeting that we take comments for any item that's not on the agenda. Now, I have some green cards here that I think most of them are on the agenda item, but if you would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda today, I suggest you go up to the podium, press the green button, tell us who you are, and to tell us what you want.
My name is Tim Pond. I live at 651 Potter, and I came and spoke briefly the last time about the short-term rentals, specifically the hosted type, where you have a room in your house that you rent out, and you're present on the property. So there's not, it's not like a vacation rental per se, where people would come and rent the whole property. And I just, I brought a couple, I, first of all, I'd like to invite the planning commission to come over and see the space that I rent out at a very reasonable rate to visitors to our town who could probably otherwise not come here. Last week, for instance, I hosted a single mother from the valley with her daughter who came out for a night to enjoy the beach for a day. I had a runner from Venezuela for the triathlon who spent the average of three months' salary nonetheless at my Airbnb to stay for one night to do the triathlon, and she came in second with a broken toe, so she's pretty amazing. And I'd also, so anyway, I brought two people with me. This gentleman, Owen, he has come to my Airbnb a number of times and stayed a few nights. And I brought my friend Nancy. She's a longtime coastside resident who actually travels. And I would like to say that it's very important for me to make the point that the hosted Airbnbs are an entirely different animal from the non-hosted ones, and that when I'm present on the property, it's completely under control. And there's really no issue with people that I don't know. In fact, these people are vetted by me carefully when they come to my house to stay. And there's, there's no noise past nine. I've hosted 200 people plus at my house and not had any problems with any neighbors concerning parking or any other issue. So, anyway, the other thing is, if somebody wants to come to a hotel and stay, they give a credit card and a driver's license, and they could probably just pay cash at the door. At my house, there is a, there's social media vetting, so that they have to be verified with their ID, and then I look at their reviews and where they've stayed and what they've done. So it's a, if it's a different level of check. And anyway, with that, I'll just let my two Airbnb, I don't, I'm not going to come every meeting, so don't worry. I just want to, I just.
Hey, my name's Owen Stevens. I live in San Jose, at where do I live? Villages Golf and Country Club. Anyway, I come out here a few times a year and am able to stay for really very little money comparatively to the hotels in the area. I can't afford the rits. And then the other ones, I don't know if you've seen what they look like and what they're charging, but it's, you know, it's not acceptable. Over a hundred dollars for a tiny little room, you know? I don't want to live like that. Anyway, it's been wonderful. I'm retired, and in fact, I think like Nancy, we travel and are intending to use Airbnb in Asia later this year. So, you know, it's just a wonderful opportunity to be able to do everything you want to do, right? And I agree with Tim. I am unaware of any travel whatsoever, I mean even loud noise or alcohol consumption or any of that kind of stuff, so it's been great. I love this town, so thank you.
My name is Nancy Zumwalt, and I am a longtime resident. At least I have a house in Moss Beach. And I'm a retired person who can't afford to live in her own home. So I rent it, and I travel. And I decided if I was going to travel, I might as well travel far away. So I, I have a home base in Barcelona where I fly around to the different EU countries and sites that I want to see. And it has been only affordable because I have used Airbnb all over my travels. I've been doing this for about three, three years now. And it's a wonderful life, I know. It's not for everyone, but my point is that Airbnb to me is, is more than just they're opening their home and their, their room and their bathrooms and their kitchens. It's, you're being a member of the family for a night or two, and the cultural experience is wonderful. I prefer staying in Airbnbs because of that, and I think that that's what happens here too. I know when I stay at Tim's, because I don't stay at my house, I stay at Airbnbs in America as well. And it's very, it tells me a lot about the town, the Airbnb experience. And the visitors coming to Airbnb are learning an awful lot about Half Moon Bay, and they always ask about restaurants and, I mean, I do, restaurants, sights to see and so forth. So it's a very, it's a very convivial opportunity for a community to relate to other geographic areas, person to person.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address the planning commission on the subject that's not on the agenda?
My name is Matt DeTom. I have a house at 408 Grove Street in Arlita Park. I have an accessory dwelling unit. I have an existing accessory dwelling unit, and I'm renting it on a short-term basis. I pay taxes. I just paid $1,300 in taxes just this afternoon for Q1 earnings from Airbnb. So I think there's two different issues in front of you today, right? Airbnb regulation is perhaps further down, but right now, tonight, I believe you guys are discussing ADUs. And the, I think there's, in the draft proposal that was submitted, there's an absolute prohibition on future use of ADUs for short-term rentals. So number one, I'd like to request that there be an exemption on existing ADUs, especially taxpaying people with existing ADUs. I think that there's quite a few of us who pay taxes. I think I echo some other comments tonight that, that Airbnbs, we have to think about the impact that we're having in limiting Airbnbs or short-term rentals. Many people today would prefer to stay in a short-term rental versus a hotel. We are cheaper. I don't have cooking facilities in my Airbnb or VRBO. They go out to eat. I pay a TOT tax. I live, just moving to Magnolia Street, every single house on Magnolia has an accessory dwelling unit. How many people on Magnolia rent to Airbnb? Zero. Nobody on that street on Magnolia does Airbnb rentals. And so I think the idea that there is a problem is incorrect. I believe there's hundreds of accessory dwelling units in Half Moon Bay, and there are less than 40 Airbnb units. So I feel like the knee-jerk reaction to restrict future ADUs is, is not based on fact. And I would encourage people in this group to actually understand how many ADUs are in Half Moon Bay and how many are on the short-term market. I think that's probably a pretty easy thing to discuss, to find out. And I feel like we are a solution, or the restriction of AD, future ADUs is a solution looking for a problem. I don't think, in fact, we have a problem. And I echo other people's comments that the issue is not the accessory dwelling units. My wife is able to quit her job. She volunteers, she's at the Young Actors Workshop meeting tonight because we have this income. She is providing to the community. You know, Christmas time, we give out food to the homeless. We are active members of the community that use the income that we make to supplement our mortgage so my wife doesn't have to go to work, so she can focus on our son and focus on our community. So I would please ask you to think very carefully about a blanket slash approach where you're saying 100% no to any future, future short-term rentals that ADUs.
Try to be a little more brief in that. He's a good friend of mine. My name's John Crook, live on 207 Filbert Street, moved here from Denver, Colorado six months ago. I'm just going to tell you just a quick logic story to it. My, one of my children is autistic, and the, I don't know if you know this, but the state of California has some of the best services for autistic children in the country. Actually, not one, it is the best. How do you move from Denver to Half Moon Bay? It's hard, you know, if you're a regular guy like me. But my friend Matt told me that, you know, sometimes, you know, you can get an accessory dwelling unit and rent out and subsidize the cost. And so I thought, you know, maybe I'd move here and, and see if I could invest in a house and, and see if we could make that dream happen. Anyway, that, if this wasn't the case, that would, that would be a serious redirection to my efforts in investing in, in new life here, so. Just want to give just one small perspective on it, and that's it.
Thank you. I see no other people setting up to talk about items that are not on the agenda. So, next item is planning commissioner, planning commission business, first draft of a new accessory dwelling unit ordinance planning commission to provide direction and input to staff. So, Jill, is that yours?
Yes. Good evening, and thank you. And we will address some options for the topic that we've heard in public forum already, so I hope you can stay for this presentation. And I would like to introduce Sarah Clark again from Shoot Mahaly, who has provided the biggest chore in pulling together this first draft ordinance, and we want to reemphasize, this is a first draft, this is a study session, it's not a public hearing. We're expecting to get input, and we're expecting to need to make changes to this. It's, there's a lot of complexity when you come out with a first draft like this, and we'll, we'll go through and talk about some of the policy points and where we went with it and why. And that doesn't mean that's the end of any of those discussions. Okay. So, this presentation's going to follow a little bit of background, overview of the draft ordinance, next steps, with plenty of room for community comment, as well as planning commission discussion. This is the only item on our agenda, so we can really focus on it. In March, we did have a study session before the planning commission with just policy questions for both accessory dwelling units, and I'll keep calling them ADUs, as well as short-term rentals, and I will probably call them STRs. We took them together to think about them a little bit, because they both have a connection to how they're accommodated on single-family lots, and how they could impact or not fit in well with existing neighborhoods, and the, the fact that both of these things are really beneficial to ownership ability in a high-cost housing market, change in household composition over time, and adding a lot of flexibility for, for how to help folks stay in a single-family home as well as utilize it well. So, then we moved ahead with ADUs first. We have a housing element that I kind of chuck around with me everywhere, that has a program in it. We really needed to update our ADU ordinance. It's, it's out of compliance with state law, so we'll be talking about that. And also, the fact that we are fully in the coastal zone, we dug into that quite a bit in March about the Coastal Commission's guidance with respect to ADUs as well as STRs. In brief, we went into quite a bit of detail at our study session, but in brief, the intent of state law was to expedite review for ADUs, to not require new utility connections, to not have a size limit for wholly within ADUs, and we defined that as an ADU that would be incorporated into existing legal development on a property such as within a single-family home where maybe a tenant improvement is done so that you can delineate space in a house for the ADU, provide an exterior entrance to it, put a kitchen into it, that kind of thing. And also, parking, they've addressed that as well, so we'll, we'll get into that. They also allow for some discretion, such as where are they to be allowed, and objective development standards, specifically size setback, floor area ratio, on things in the architecture array that are really, really basic, like does it match in terms of side trim, roofing, roof pitch, materials, color of the house? That, that very standard objective approach to design review, nothing beyond that. And is it consistent with the coastal act and the local coastal program is where we can have some discretion to can, make sure that we are. Coastal Commission guidance, we got into that a little bit as well. There's been two statements issued by the Coastal Commission in 2017, providing guidance on how to update local coastal programs to comply with state law. Specifically, they encouraged local jurisdictions to update their local coastal programs. They acknowledge local control. They prioritize, obviously, maintaining protection for coastal resources, visual resources, and coastal access. There's, there's no degradation allowed for any of those things, and we'll, we'll talk about our approach to hopefully addressing that. And then they discussed utilizing waivers and exemptions as appropriate insofar as they, they're within the realm of any particular application that doesn't hit anything in that bullet point above it. So, tonight, what we, what we tried to do is, we tried pretty hard, is to bring this first draft ordinance as an ordinance that reflects the discussion you had in March. We know it's not perfect, but we, we think we got quite a few of the points, and there was a lot of consensus in the room on most of the points. This also incorporates water district and fire district input. We had a chance to meet with them after the study session, and I'll give you updates on that. And we included some suggestions for topics that were left open. We had kind of an open-ended discussion about how to permit coastal development permits, when we could have exemptions, et cetera. So we'll show you a starting position of what we're suggesting in this draft ordinance and a few options for that, as well as parking. We didn't, we heard a lot of, parking was probably the one thing where I felt like we had community input that said, oh, don't worry about it at all, and others who were really concerned, and I wasn't even completely sure from my planning commission notes where, where you were with it. So, plenty of options with parking, and that we'll be able to discuss. We wanted to get through this first draft with you and community input before sitting down with Coastal Commission staff. We have a scheduled time for, to see them in May, and we'll, we'll bring this to them. They know we're working on this. And we will also continue to seek additional community input. I attended the real estate groups meeting this morning and reviewed all of these points with them. They've been really actively following this, coming to our counter, calling us, and wanting to know when this is going to get done, so there's a lot of interest in it. So, the draft ordinance overview, we are going to cover basically the staff report topics as, as they're laid out in the report, but we, we've added a slide about the link to short-term rentals, because we, we heard some more in, kind of input about that since the draft, this first draft came out. So first off, we believe that we can designate, so this is about the review process, do we need a CDP or not? And in which cases would we, and which cases would we not need one? The draft has us believing, and we believe this is true from the Coastal Commission guidance, that if we're wholly within existing development, we're not constituting development, and we would deem this to be exempt based on state law's direction that an ADU is a function of single-family development and that we're not building anything else. If it's a new development ADU, then the name of that leads you to see that, and in particular, this would be like a fully detached ADU, or, and we'll talk in a minute about additions to homes, but a fully detached ADU, we would consider it to be development. And we've proposed an administrative coastal development permit with two of the three of our standard noticing requirements. Currently, our noticing requirements are an ad in the newspaper, a sign posted on the property, and mail out to 300 feet of all, all the properties within, when that, within that radius of the, of the site. We would like to set aside having to put the ad in the newspaper in these cases. It's 100 bucks, and very few people read them, and we don't think it's actually accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish with state law, which is to streamline the effort and make it less expensive. But the other two items, which are really, have a strong local focus, we would, we would suggest keeping those in, which was my understanding, a bit of direction the last time the Coastal Commission reviewed Half Moon Bay's ADU ordinance, and when we updated, and I think it was 2015. Now, the gray area, the, the new development ADU where we're making an addition to a single-family home, or maybe there's going to be a garage conversion, but in addition to that existing structure. So there's, there's more square footage. It's being added to, to the property. We came in with an exemption because we were wearing our state law hats. There, there are other options. Right now, the code would require the administrative coastal development permit for that. I'd suggest one other thought, which is the threshold that is used for additions to single-family homes now, which is the 10% threshold. So for example, if an existing single-family home is 2,000 square feet, and the addition is less than 200 square feet, then that addition would be exempt from a coastal development permit, provided that no coastal resources or any of the other concerns that we may have are triggered. If it's over 10%, then we, we require a coastal development permit for those additions. So, the 10% threshold may be appropriate here. It's, it's consistent with our practice now, although I would consider it to be, it's really conservative to have that kind of discretionary review for such a small addition, in particular additions that are just one story, or if they're one story to the back and nobody can see it. Staff is perfectly capable of reviewing those. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that threshold anyway for single-family, so just share that. Anyway, those are some thoughts for you on process. That's probably one of the longer chats we'll have on these slides. Please do. I do not ever mind.
So I wanted to add one thing on administrative CDPs, the point being that staff is perfectly capable of generally handling these. An administrative CDP, moving forward, will always have the option of being brought to planning commission or city council attention. And the way that it will work in compliance with state law and in the new ordinance is to allow, to have administrative CDPs listed on agendas for the planning commission and the city council, and so if there's any concerns about those issuance, they can then be elevated to the planning commission and city council.
All right, next. This, we presented in quite a bit of detail at your study session, the research that was done on Sarah and city staff too. We, we looked back at the actual ballot language for Measure D, and it exempts two types of residential development from getting a certificate. One is density bonus units, and two is replacement unit-to-unit housing. So a tear-down replaced by a new single-family home, for example, would not need a Measure D certificate. That is consistent with the growth, I can't remember exactly what we call it, the, the growth management portion of the zoning code exempts the same two pieces. The second unit code, which we're going to change its name with this update, but our second unit ordinance in the zoning code is silent on this topic. And then our subdivision ordinance strangely exempts density bonus units, one-for-one replacements, and ADUs, and we do not know how that got in there, why, and it's not consistent. So. So we're concerned about consistency, and we're also concerned about what the value of a Measure D certificate is from a lot of different perspectives, including how much it costs, but also what the equivalent of a unit is. And so we're a little, we're concerned about this, but what we're proposing, and this is what the county is doing in unincorporated midcoast. They don't have Measure D certificates, but they are counting their units. They have, this year, we've mentioned this before, their number of units in their 1% limit is 44. This year for Half Moon Bay, our 1% limit is 66. So it's about a 50% more than they have. They're counting ADUs against that 44, as if they were any other unit. So if it's a single-family home, they count it. If it's an ADU, they count it. If it's a multifamily unit, a duplex unit, they count every single unit against those 44. We do that too, except we've been not completely confident about whether or not we should be counting ADUs. So what we came in with here is we're going to recommend that we start counting them, but specifically exempt charging them for the Measure D certificate, which is on the order of $500 or $600 right now, because we think it's really counter to the intent of streamlining these. I'm worried about this in the long run. I don't see it as a significant issue on the short-term horizon because we aren't seeing large residential developments that might wipe out the inventory of Measure D certificates in a particular year. But that could happen in a few years. Maybe some site opens up and we see something coming through like that. And I'd be really concerned about counting an ADU, which we're under the impression, and we're getting some more numbers on them. They have, on average, less than half the development impacts of a single-family home. They're using a lot less water. They don't even, they're basically functioning like a large addition to a single-family home in terms of how they affect occupancy and use of the infrastructure. And we're doing additional research with San Mateo County on that. So it's been suggested to us that we could consider updates in the LCP that would let us use fractional certificates. We're not proposing to do that right now because we frankly just don't have the time to do the research and to put that in. And our code is actually pretty clear that we should have been counting them. So we see this as a starting position, knowing that we may need to continue to address it. We are also proposing acknowledging ADUs as having some status in the allocation system. Should there be a limited number of certificates available in a particular year, because they are meant to be affordable by design, as affordable housing can also compete very well in that same arena, should that happen. Okay. Where allowed, the existing ordinance allows ADUs on lots of single-family homes in all the R zones, R1, 2, and 3, and our mixed-use districts when they have single-family homes, although currently we're requiring a use permit in those cases, which we would no longer want to require. If we have a single-family home in a mixed-use lot, we would suggest processing the ADU similarly. We're suggesting opening up additional zoning designations, and we understand there may be some concerns about these. One was brought to our attention tonight, the intent with urban and open space reserve. From my mind, and I see the code wasn't quite tight enough there, it's if there's already a house. This isn't trying to open up those zones for additional residential development unless they comply to it. They meet the minimum lot size and they comply in other ways. We have many urban reserve and open space lots that are, it seems like most of them are non-conforming in size, that already have houses on them, and they're pretty locked in. And so we would suggest considering adding ADUs to those lots only. PUD and PUDX. So PUDX is actually Dykstra Ranch, which is now known as Pacific Ridge. There are other PUDs that we don't specifically call out, although the Matucci PUD over off Jenna Lane already has ADUs as part of that development. Ocean Colony is obviously the largest PUD in town. They have an HOA with CCNRs that do not allow ADUs. We're not trying to supersede any of that. This is just to acknowledge should an application come in and it conforms to those CCNRs that are being enforced, then we would proceed to process it. We're not really trying to affect what's on the books there, but except that these are zoning districts where ADUs could be allowed, where there are existing single-family homes. And in fact, it's already happened in the case of Jenna Lane. You had discretion with regards to size of the unit. The existing code allows 700 square feet as a maximum-sized unit. For the wholly within, we would not have a maximum size. That's pursuant to state law. We're proposing a maximum size for the detached or an addition to a single-family home to bump up to 800 square feet. We talked about this quite a bit at our study session. We've looked at other kinds of scaling for sizes for these units. For example, the county had sort of a scaled-off FAR approach. We're, I'm personally concerned about doing that because our lot sizes are predominantly small with a few really big ones kicked in, and it becomes quite messy to deal with it. Plus, the intent of these units is that they are affordable by design. And if we start letting them be bigger and bigger and bigger, you're kind of losing the whole purpose of them. We still are allowed to apply the overall site FAR, although apparently there's an assembly bill going through. Yeah, tell, why don't you tell them about that?
Sure, it's actually a Senate bill. The Assembly and, the State Assembly and Senate both are considering revisions to state ADU law. They're going to committee hearing next week. So everything is up in the air for now. But one of the draft bills does contain a provision that would state that cities are no longer allowed to enforce FAR requirements on ADUs. So this is both a, I don't want to prognosticate about what exactly will make it into a final bill. I do anticipate we will see a further change to state law come September. We may be back here before January 1 next year to try and address that. But that's the update for now.
So from staff's perspective, our focus on where we have discretion has been to try to scale this really thoughtfully to Half Moon Bay's existing conditions and how it's actually working, because most of these state laws are allowing some level of exemption for coastal zone. And I personally feel that going way over our FAR limits can affect a lot of things that are important to the coastal zone, especially site drainage. So we're just, we're going to do our best effort with this and then see whether or not we're at cross, crosswise with anything that changes. But I actually feel pretty good about this one. We note as, all of staff seeing these applications come on the counter that for the most part, it's pretty hard to fit a 700-square-foot unit on quite a few lots. Some of them get to be a little bit bigger, but rarely would the typical lot in Arleada Park or Alsace or Casa Del Mar, et cetera, have room for a much bigger unit based on the FAR and what's already developed on the site. So we think this is pretty darn fair. It's a little more generous. And according to Sarah, it also works pretty well for HCD, who is our State Housing and Community Development Department, who reviews housing element in all the cities. And they also look at how we're implementing them, and they are not pleased if you're too restrictive. So the 800 square feet is satisfactory. So we brought that back. I know we talked about it a lot last time, and we ran some more numbers since we saw you, and I still like this. You can do something different if you want, and we'll noodle on it and figure something out. But we didn't change that. Occupancy requirements, this one was really a surprise to me. Most ADU ordinances from way back when, and they've carried on and on, have a deed restriction requiring owner occupancy of either the ADU or the single-family home. And the ordinance in Half Moon Bay right now includes that restriction. And we have these deed restrictions recorded before going to building permit. Community said, no, actually, we don't, we really don't want that. That's really limiting on our ability to use our property, and we need more flexibility than that. And we found out from, the county took their occupancy requirement out. Quite a few other jurisdictions are. The draft ordinance does not include an occupancy requirement, and we're trying to figure out how to deal with all those deed restrictions that are on the books, that we don't think it would be fair for them to have to bear, carry that burden if we change that particular rule. So we'd love to get some feedback about that. At the real estate meeting I was at this morning, when I told them about this, they were very, very excited. Okay, here's your slide. All right, so short-term rentals. Here's a few things on this. First of all, the existing ordinance is silent on the topic. In fact, the zoning code doesn't even acknowledge short-term rentals. So we, we're going to be working on that next, and we'd love input from community members about that. In this first draft, we came out with not allowing use of ADUs for short-term rentals. And I just want to share why, as a, just as a first position, but there's options. These units are meant to be used for housing. And we know that HCD is looking at this. We also know what our county colleagues are doing. There are 21 jurisdictions in San Mateo County, including San Mateo County itself, the county and 20 cities. Just regarding Half Moon Bay, six of them allow use of ADUs for short-term rentals, and 13 do not. So that it is considered, and they've been moving in that direction because it's considered best practice to maintain ADUs for housing. Now, that said, you could consider allowing it, and allowing, which would allow a substantial amount of flexibility in how the ADU is used over time. And that can be really helpful for folks to stay in their homes, to maintain an income stream in different ways, whether it's rented long-term or short-term, whether you may move into your own unit and rent out the house. I mean, there's a lot of twists and turns that can happen to having folks stay on a property over time. The other way to go would be to do some kind of a grandfathering and to acknowledge those compliant, thank you for paying your TOT, folks who have a short-term rental, whether it's in their house or in the ADU, and simply, we can probably figure out which ones they are. There aren't that many short-term rentals registered in Half Moon Bay, and we could think through on a grandfathering program. I would suggest considering that seriously. We're still, we really are trying to bring these forward as housing. So thinking about new ones and people knowing what the ground rules are when they come in. There is something about, to be said about somebody who's been operating under the law when we have no code about it at all, and for us to change the setting of the table is a concern. So we appreciate that. So we just wanted to acknowledge that, put out a couple of options, and maybe there's some other ideas in the room. All right, oh, the best one, okay, parking. So the existing ordinance, single-family development is supposed to have two garage, two garage parking spaces per unit. Not every single-family home in town has that, of course. There's quite a few non-conforming parking conditions where maybe only one garage spot, maybe not any. And we acknowledged non-conformance. The existing ordinance also allows tandem parking, and we've been requiring one additional space when an ADU is added to a property. So in the ideal condition, you'd have a two-car garage and a third parking place for the unit, which could actually be in the driveway. Draft ordinance. So this is trying to figure out how to deal with, to really comply with state law but in a way that makes sense for the circumstances that we have in Half Moon Bay with respect to transit and its function here, as well as with respect to where parking is maybe more of an issue and relative to being in the coastal zone. So state law says if within one-half mile of a transit stop, you don't get to require any more parking anymore. And I struggled with that because, where is it? Just about every neighborhood is, this is a transit map. Can you see the little black dots up and down Highway 1? Just about every street in every neighborhood, because this town is long and thin, and not deeply set off of Highway 1, just about every single property is within a half-mile radius of a bus stop with long headways and low ridership. So we, I struggle with calling this transit service akin to what I think the state law had in mind for honoring a parking reduction when there's really transit that's active in the area. We'll go back to the map in a sec. So in the draft, this was just a first cut. We said, well, gosh, on the west side of town, we have some neighborhoods that are more impacted by beach parking. In particular, Arleada Park near Poplar and Olive Miramar, it seems to us. Pieces, portions of Casa Del Mar over on Wave in particular, but not quite as much. And then, of course, there's, there are neighborhoods on the west side of town that don't provide beach access. Ocean Colony, being a gated community, doesn't provide it. And Grand Belleville does not connect to the beach. So we just did east-west and said, if you're east, you don't need to worry about it because you're not providing beach parking, and it's not a coastal zone issue, and you're within a half-mile of transit stop. And if it's west, we have a Coastal Act consideration for coastal access. So maybe perhaps we should continue to require that extra, extra space. This is a starting position to, it helped us with our thinking, but we're really interested in your input. This is just our justifications on it. This particular map is showing sort of, if you, it's Olive Miramar. We took a better look at Casa Del Mar and pulled it back off of Frontage Road. I haven't seen any beach parking on Frontage Road, for example. And then there's kind of a natural east-west division in Alsace and Arleada Park that we were poking around on. And those areas in blue, we thought perhaps they could keep providing that one parking place because we know there's beach parking there. Can't wait to hear what you have to say about this. The real estate folks were actually, I don't know, they were nodding their heads, so I don't actually know what that means. To be honest. Okay. And we're almost done. This is a bit that we're still trying to figure out. We have duplex and triplex. We have duplex and triplex development proposals, for example, I don't want to, we're not on the agenda. Let's say we had a subdivision for duplexes and they wanted to invoke the density bonus ordinance and we don't allow ADUs with anything other than a single-family home. And that's the current condition of the code and that's actually what you saw in this first draft ordinance. We've wondered if they could fulfill their density bonus with bonus units being an, an ADU on a duplex or a triplex lot. I think they could probably, we could probably already make the stretch because incentives must be granted for the sake of density bonuses, but we just, it's not overtly noted and we're wondering about it. This would be a really unusual, rarely invoked condition. It just happened to be on my mind because there's a couple of projects that are curiously flirting with this, so, just wanted to note that. And then incentives for deed-restricted units. A couple of people said, "Gosh, we do wish we could not provide parking and have a bigger unit and have lesser setbacks and et cetera, et cetera." And so, we wondered if that, those kinds of things, if you start to add them up, might be a way to provide incentives if, if the unit was actually deed-restricted as affordable. Not deed-restricted, the other deed, we were talking about ownership or occupancy. Deed-restricted as a low, into the low-income category, for example, for a household that Those were the high points of the draft ordinance and we are looking forward to your input, hoping for some public comment. By the way, the existing structure use, and I think I forgot to mention it and I'm reminded, can include a garage. We have a lot of detached garages that, it seems like almost every detached garage has non-conforming setbacks because that's how they were done, when they were done. And state law says, just accept that non-conforming setback, that development is already there. But doesn't mean you don't put in the firewall and the, the safety requirements of having a structure closer to, to the lot line, but it does allow for retaining that, that envelope, really, that's established by, by the garage. So, we, we included that. Okay, what did I miss? Okay. Thank you.
Jill, thank you. Asking for advice from my fellow commissioners, I mean, our typical process is to ask for first work with the staff on clarifying questions, go to public comment and then come back to us. We're not voting on anything. We're in effect trying to get input that we can then direct staff. My question is whether it might not be better to change this around and ask for public comment first and then maybe come together and work with amongst ourselves, with staff. I'm asking that as a change in our usual process. I was thinking about that as we were talking, I just want advice.
So, so, reasonable, reasonable suggestion from where I sit, I would just, somewhere in the process, in case it comes up in other questions, I, I want to pick the issue up now in case someone wants to talk about it. You know, there was a section in the report that talked about water. There are other utilities associated with residences, electricity, for example. And I, I want to be sure that I understand, and, you know, probably John already knows the answer to this because of his profession, but whether additional intensification of use that resulted in a requirement for, say, you know, a greater electric service capacity does not escape the review of the city. I'm thinking that's straightforward, but I want to be sure it gets up there. And then, I want to be sure I understand what is mandatory. You know, there's, I realize that the answer may be, "We don't know, but we have to do something." But I want to be sure through the course of the conversation, we don't waste time thinking about things that we need to do because the, you know, the, the heel of the boot of the Housing and Community Development Agency isn't going to come down on our throats if we don't and which things are appropriate for us to have discretion. I'm, I lack clarity on that.
I think we're all doing that fine.
Thank you.
I just have one short question. I'm sure I read it and I missed it. So, the definition of an ADU would have a kitchen in the unit. If it doesn't have a kitchen, then it's not ADU. Right, okay.
Jill?
I did miss something that was pretty important. Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Water meters and fire sprinklers. I mentioned that early on that we had worked through some of these. Fire sprinklers, it's really, really simple. If the single-family home has, is sprinkled, the unit needs to be sprinkled. If the single-family home is not sprinkled, the unit does not need to be sprinkled and it's, doesn't matter if it's attached, detached, in addition, wholly within, it's just, it's one way or the other. So, that works really well because folks who came in with sprinkler, they've already had to buy that and to keep that system effective, they need to maintain it throughout the development on the property. So, we, we're comfortable with that. The fire department already has that in their policy and they're, they're going to watch what the final version of this is and conform anything else that they may need to in their code, but they're very comfortable with, with where this is going. Water. So, the water district would never require a second connection for an ADU because an ADU is going to have fixture count that is related to an addition. They would not require another connection for an addition to a home. However, they were requiring a second water meter and they had some good reasons why, but it's pretty complicated to require a second water meter. I think they were under the impression that it, it wasn't that expensive. A water meter's just a few hundred dollars, but plumbing the water meter can be quite a few thousand dollars depending on the condition of, of, of the plumbing on the site. For example, a wholly-within ADU would have co-mingled plumbing. You could have quite a heck of a time separating that to get separate metering and it's just really not a reasonable prospect and it's, frankly, the state law's direction is no new utility connections and, and sewer has not been an issue that has not, we've, we're practicing just using the service that is at hand, provided that it is adequate for the house. So, I wanted to mention that and then in due course, electrical service is going to be part of any building permit that comes in for an addition or whether it's an ADU or anything else. If a service upgrade has to be part of it, it would be part of a combination building permit. You have more?
So, again, my question is for advice. Do you want to keep on asking questions?
Okay.
What's your, okay, all right. Okay, with that said, I'll open up the proceeding to public comments and I have quite a few cards here, so, please make sure the green button's on and state your name. And first speaker I have is Matthew D. Tomby, followed by Tom Slott. So, Tom Slott and followed by Owen Josephs.
Green, right, there we go. My name is Tom Slay. I live at 332 Spruce Street in our Leda Park, Half Moon Bay. I guess my question is, I really appreciate all the work you're doing with these AUDs. If you, my question is, if, if you have the lot coverage, I have an eighty-six-hundred-square-foot lot. I have a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot house, so, my question is, you're limiting to eight-hundred square feet. If we use part of our garage, can we use, do the eight-hundred plus half of our garage? Because we have six parking spots on our property, plus two in the street, so we have the parking. That would leave another one-car garage. So, what I'm trying to do is, is get a bigger unit. If we have an existing detached garage, if we could use part of the garage, say one-half of it, plus the eight-hundred square feet, which would probably give us close to a thousand, where you could actually have a, a family in there with, with children instead of having basically, you know, a, a couples' unit for seven-hundred square feet. So, that's something I would like to have you guys consider. I mean, the property, our lot is, is, is a big lot and I, I think we, we can fit the coverage in there and basically put the eight-hundred unit, use the eight-hundred square foot, but plus use half our garage, which would probably give us another two-hundred square feet because we have a huge garage. So, that's something I'd like to have you guys consider. You know, there's an exception to everything and I, I talked to Jill today about it, but anyway, so that's something I'd like to pass to you guys and hopefully you consider that and maybe we can make that work because if you have, you know, if you have the lot coverage, I don't, I don't see where the issue would be on. Thank you.
Thank you. Owen Josephs, followed by Nancy Zumwalt. Owen Josephs, okay. And Nancy spoke earlier, okay. Tim, did you speak earlier? Tim Pond?
Can you hear me? Is that on? My name is Bruce Russell. I actually live at 103 Carnoustie Drive in Half Moon Bay. I'm also own the company that manages all of Ocean Colony. It's a complex issue and I appreciate that there's a lot of different ways to address a lot of different issues here and it's a matter of balancing, in my opinion, the need for creating more housing and flexible housing versus impacts to neighborhoods and to the community coastal resources and infrastructure. And I, I wanted to make a few observations. I can't make all of them because it's a really complex topic, but I think it's important, Commissioner Benjamin indicated, I think it's very important for you to recognize what's mandatory and what's not. The entire ordinance is discretionary. You don't have to adopt this ordinance at all. You may adopt it. Once you adopt it, then you have to follow certain requirements, but a lot of the requirements are discretionary. And I think it would be really good for the staff to outline for you as they propose an ordinance, what's mandatory once you adopt this ordinance versus what's discretionary. Maybe put a D and an M next to each one of them so you can figure out what options you have. For example, this issue that these should be counted towards Measure D. I was here when Measure A and Measure D were adopted and it is true that the only exemptions in the original ballot measure were for density bonuses and for replacement housing and for some reason dwelling, second dwelling units got in. I don't understand how this ordinance can be subject to Measure D, given the provision in state law that says that the accessory dwelling unit shall not be considered in the application of any local ordinance policy or program to limit residential growth. I don't understand how you can subject this to Measure D, given that prohibition and that is mandatory. Second, I think applying this to Measure D, applying Measure D to this is really a difficult issue because what you have to understand is that at some point, if there's more applications than are permitted under Measure D, these accessory dwelling units are going to start to compete with other projects. Forget about market rate housing. I've done a lot of affordable housing in this city and it would be unfortunate if twenty accessory dwelling units were competing against a very low and modern-income housing project of the same size. That housing project has to pay for sewer connections, has to pay for water connections, has to pay for electrical meters, has to deal with capacity. It's not a matter of whether, under the building code, an electrical panel has to be upgraded. I think the question you were asking is, "How much capacity do we have here? How much sewer capacity does SAM have? How much water capacity?" As you know, there are no non-priority connections left. So, when we built twelve affordable housing units near Ocean Colony, we had to provide twelve water connections, twelve sewer connections, twelve everything. Allowing accessory dwelling units to be applied to Measure D, but not require any kind of utility connections is going to start to compete against these other projects and these other projects may be more significant. If you're going to apply Measure D, how Measure D works, as you well know, is the city determines what one percent is and how many people are in an average household. And let's say it's two and a half to three people in a twelve-hundred or fifteen-hundred-foot unit. I mean, how you can treat a hundred and, I think the minimum size, right, is a hundred and fifty to eight-hundred? How you can treat a hundred and fifty-square-foot accessory dwelling unit is the same as a fifteen-hundred-square-foot affordable apartment and count them both the same is really difficult to understand.
Thank you, time-wise. Those are good comments and I think you'll certainly get other chances at the apple when this comes back, so, other people want to speak.
We just make one closing comment. The guidance from the Coastal Commission staff indicated that you can treat as non-development junior ADUs where you're replacing a bedroom unit. Your ordinance indicates you can treat the non-development if they're just wholly included in a unit. That's not the guidance that came from the executive director.
Thank you. Next is Mike Farrar.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. The time limit is tough on this one, given what it is. Now I have to go write. So, there's many things in here that are problematic to me, one of which is kind of a disconnect, is that I think I understand what the people of Half Moon Bay think they've been voting for, for the last couple of elections. And I think they would be shocked to hear that we're trying to find more housing sites faster and quicker. I think that would come, that we're hunting, that we want to apply this to the PUDs and to open space, et cetera. Applying it to the PUDs is a nightmare. You've got fourteen PUDs in many different stages, seven of which have no development on them whatsoever, but they have lots in them. What happens to the price of those lots when the land trust wants to go buy them if now they're entitled to second units? What happens up in Surf Beach if the developers up there who currently are bringing a project that has no houses suddenly see this ordinance and think, "Hmm, maybe we're headed the wrong way." And in Ocean Colony, that's a private community, very strictly covered under covenants, et cetera, et cetera. It's a nightmare to try to have this go into Ocean Colony. So, I, I just don't see the need, you know, current ordinance is for residentially zoned and some commercially zoned. That's fine, that makes sense to me, but then to go to the open space areas or the urban reserve, the housing portion that's in those zones is what the city thought they could get away with and not have it taking when they did the plan, right? They're not places we're trying to create housing opportunities. That's just our limited give to those areas. I, I don't think we should be looking at those as housing sites. Much of what was here causes me concern, one of which is costs. I see that we want to reduce costs and do things for free, et cetera, et cetera. Well, you know, if it's not required by the state, I'm not sure that those things should be done without some council approval of it because I remember when I was on the council and we tried to give the restaurants a little break on their sewer fees, we had to do a fee study in order to do it. And I've seen other things where you change a fee, you have to do a fee study. I don't, I don't know how you can get fee studies that get to zero because there is going to be work, there's going to be a cost, somebody has to pay it. So, unless the state, the state in all its munificence is dictating it, I don't, I think you ought to be careful about what we're giving away for this. So, I'll have to write on the rest of it and there's a lot of it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly, there's a lot of issues, a lot of things are open-ended, and I guess the question is, should we just take this at random? Is there a way to kind of begin with the first page of the ordinance and go through and make comments? Again, I'm looking for advice, what's the best way to work through this, uh, argument as, or issues, and, uh, and how do we respond to comments we've heard from the, from the audience on this? So, again, I'm asking for advice from my fellow Commissioners.
Through the chair?
Okay.
Um, oh, I'm sorry, did, uh, so, if we only have, have we gone, we've gone through all the green sheets then, and everyone who's wanted to speak?
We've all the green sheets, right.
You know, given the significance of the topic and the relatively small number of speakers, I wonder if you'd entertain, um, allowing any speakers who feel like they had some more information that they could use to pollinate our thinking about this, to, uh, to share with us. I'm not suggesting any particular speaker, any of them, who felt that they were, had some ideas. I think we, we could benefit from hearing what they, they have to say, as long as it doesn't take, you know, we could set another time, say, make it another three or four minutes or something, and, uh, I don't think we, it would cost us much in terms of our meeting time.
Okay, on this, uh, all right, uh, hearing that, I have no problem with that, so, uh, anybody that wants to take a three to four minutes, and again, the whole idea is not to, uh, to, uh, take up all our time and not to reiterate things that people have already said, so, anybody that would like to, to spend some more time, but also, again, note that this is going to come back. If you would like to put your comments in writing and come back to us, I think that's also an option, too. So, I just want to lay that out, but if anybody wants to speak, I'll open up public comments again.
Excellent.
If you want to, yeah, but you have to go to the podium, and please state your name for the record.
So again, Matthew DeTome, uh, ten-year Half Moon Bay resident. Four oh eight Grove Street is my current residence. You know, I, I think that the, there's two separate issues. I believe that the, the issue at hand here is how, how do we think about the future of Half Moon Bay in keeping it? I moved here from Phoenix, Arizona, because I love California, I love this community, I love everything about Half Moon Bay, so we want to maintain those things. And I just think that the, as we evolve in the thinking of liberalizing ADUs, and I concur with some of the other comments here, that we don't necessarily have to draft an ordinance, and I don't believe there will be a mad rush. Uh, I, my unit is thirteen feet by twenty feet. It's two hundred and sixty square foot with a little sleeping loft on it. The, it is not, it's not, I would not rent it to a teacher or to another person for a long-term rental. And I feel like there's many units, or a lot of units in Half Moon Bay, that are those small sizes, and I feel like some of us who want to augment our income with an ADU or build a small unit, uh, may not necessarily want a full-time resident there. I feel like the short-term rental use, so I live on, on, on four oh eight Grove Street. There are a couple across the street, they're in a tiny little unit, there's a couple with two cars. My short-term unit is always a couple, or maybe a couple with a child, with always one car. Uh, and I would invite, uh, you know, the, the Commissioners to come and look at it, to talk to my neighbors. I probably have one of the highest rated Airbnbs and short-term rental units in Half Moon Bay. Uh, it's called Charming Beach Cottage, please take a look at it online. Uh, and I just feel like we, we should not over, the, the intent is, is good, and I, and I, we have many friends that are teachers, but I don't think we need to over-regulate, because I don't actually believe there is a problem, and I don't believe there's going to be a floodgate of people interested in all of a sudden doing Airbnbs. You know, if there's three or four hundred ADUs in Half Moon Bay at the moment, and only twenty or thirty of them are Airbnbs or short-term units, then I don't believe we actually have a problem. Thank you. And I'm, I'm happy to, you know, I, I'd actually like to come and speak with you and offer, as a responsible tax-paying ADU operator, I would, you know, I'd welcome any, you know, calls or interaction with, with staff.
Anybody else would like to speak?
Revening conversation, uh, been stewing over some ideas here, and I'm new to this, so I'll make it real quick. From my experience, uh, human beings are remarkable at being able to self-organize and self-select, and especially when you, where you nudge them. So perhaps, I'm just going to throw this out there, and I'll, as a seed, and let the group, uh, think about it. Perhaps, if, if you want to steer choices towards long-term rentals, you could give those people a break, because I know a lot of people are on the cusp. Like, they want to rent out to, to bring in some income, but I don't want to deal with nightly rentals, maybe I want longer term. Other people on their side of the fence, maybe you can steer a slight benefit towards whatever you need. Um, and then the other thing that, uh, just came to my mind, something we're all familiar with is, you know, how carbon credits are traded, uh, carbon footprints, and, you know, factories that produce more pollution pay for carbon credits, et cetera, trade. You might be able to do the same thing with parking, so some people might need a lot more parking than others, and perhaps you could trade, maybe each location could have parking allocations that could be traded, so someone that didn't need to give up the parking could get some sort of benefit from someone that needed to take more of their fair share. Kind of half-baked, but, you know, think about it, I mean, it's, let people self-select.
Hi, my name's Scott Finley. I'm a realtor on the coast. I also own a home in Miramar, forty-one Alameda. Um, I spoke last time at the public hearing. I do have a detached, existing garage that I would like to convert to an ADU for my own personal use, so I don't have to displace my tenants. Um, I reviewed the draft ordinance, I'm totally in favor of what's been addressed there. It addresses my needs, but it also sets guidelines on the development of new structures that aren't currently built on the properties. I do hear some concerns that there's going to be this mass construction of ADUs. I do not see that as ever going to happen anywhere. Uh, the majority of people that I know as a realtor, they don't want another unit in their backyard. This is, this is a solution for some housing, uh, it's a solution for owners to have a second unit that choose to have it, it's a solution to have an adult child who needs to come back, or, uh, an older parent who's maybe lost their spouse, to be able to have some independence and still have a, have their separate home. So it addresses a lot of needs, but are a hundred people going to show up all of a sudden and say, I want to do this, I've got, I see visions of income coming in? The vast majority of people are not going to pursue this in Half Moon Bay or Pacifico or anywhere else, whether there's coastal zone or not. So, I think, uh, those concerns of, we're not going to have parking, we're not going to have, uh, we're going to overload our city services, just don't see that happening.
Since I have a chance to say it, uh, the eight hundred square feet, I, I don't understand the necessity for that. I have friends that have, uh, ADUs in other towns that are rather less than that, and they work quite well, and we just heard from a person that has one at two hundred and sixty square feet. So, eight hundred, you know, knowing that this might be done in somebody's backyard, seems like pretty much crowding the lot, pretty well too much to me, uh, and would be setback issues to boot. So I thought that the seven hundred original was a sensible thing to do. Regarding the transit relation to parking, you know, our legislature is not perfect, and, uh, I gather there's no headways called for at those stops? That's almost as nutty as eight twenty-seven, which thankfully died last week, but then they have eight twenty-eight coming, and that'll be an even bigger problem. So, uh, all, all in all, I, I come back again to the, the PUDs, and there are fourteen, seven of which have nothing in them, many of which have these, what we call, uh, old subdivisions, and the impact of applying this in those PUDs, I think, could be highly problematical. And with that, I'll just say that, uh, I'll respond to the rest of it in writing.
Yes, sorry. Bruce? Yeah, thank you, Bruce Russell. I recognize the need for more flexible and affordable housing. Frankly, I don't recognize the need to create a bunch of de facto guesthouses and, uh, mock hotels and motels. I don't think the citizens of Half Moon Bay want that. And they particularly don't want it without cooking facilities, without independent restrooms, without sanitation facilities in a hundred and fifty square foot garage. Housing issue, legitimate, not too sympathetic to the rest of it. I think that, for example, I, I think that the limitation on, uh, short-term rentals needs to be beefed up. The language in the proposed ordinance, that you have to rent it thirty or more consecutive days, that could be thirty consecutive days to thirty different people, or it could be thirty days to one person who subleases it to other people. I think the owner occupancy requirement is absolutely essential. I think that will, you know, we don't, I don't think Half Moon Bay wants a bunch of absentee landlords moving in, buying units, and creating secondary units so they can make more money, and, uh, I don't think that's consistent with, uh, the perspective on growth limitation. I don't think it's consistent with the infrastructure limitations. I mean, anybody who lives here and has lived here for a long time, I've been working here since nineteen eighty-three, we, we need more traffic on Saturday and Sunday coming to AB and, I mean, to get overnight rentals? I don't think so. So, I think, I think the staff is right, that from a housing standpoint, this really needs to be addressed. I think it's a valuable tool, if the balance is correct, and I think there needs to be some corrections in the ordinance, and I think some things could be tightened up, but I think the focus should be on providing housing for segments of the community that need it, and for people who live here who can't continue to maintain their homes without some supplemental income, but not for absentee landlords coming in and buying units and putting secondary units in, or people planning new PUDs, and every single house is going to have an accessory dwelling unit, so we're going to create a bunch of duplexes, de facto duplexes. Most of the ADA, ADU units in the city right now are illegal, they weren't done with building permits, they weren't done with connections, and I don't think we need to be grand-parenting those in or protecting them. That's my perspective.
Well, all right, can I close public hearing? Anybody else? All right, so, uh, there are a lot of issues, uh, here. Jill, Sarah, do you want to say anything before we?
We would love to. Yeah, we think, um, to support your discussion, it would be helpful if Sarah had a chance to respond to some of the, um, topics that came up through public comment, and then I have a couple as well, so we'll, we'll let Sarah go first.
Great, and first, I'm actually going to address Commissioner Benjamin's comment or question from the clarifying questions portion about, um, what is mandatory and what is discretionary. This is an area that gets very complicated very quickly, unfortunately. So it is right that, um, the way that state law is crafted, it states that, it sort of sets a very, very minimal floor for ADUs, and says, in general, if any DU complies with this and the city has not adopted a compliant ordinance, then the city has to approve that ADU under those circumstances. It then gives the cities an option to adopt an ADU-compliant ordinance, and in that, laying out the requirements for that ordinance, it, the state law says certain provisions are mandatory and certain provisions are, um, are left for room for the city to decide. So areas where the city has room include things like, um, setting setbacks, setting the floor area ratios, setting the size of the ADU, but there are many more, and I, I don't think it would be productive at this very moment for me to list all those out, but I'm happy to provide that information at a later time. Um, the other wrinkle here is that Half Moon Bay is in a unique circumstance, because we are in the coastal zone. So with other cities that I've worked for, they, they've very much been stuck with what state law says, and, um, the requirements that are in there that are mandatory, uh, we've had to include in draft ordinances, um, whether or not the cities wanted them. Um, in Half Moon Bay, uh, according to the law and how the Coastal Commission has interpreted it, uh, the city has the opportunity to add more discretion in order to protect Coastal Act resources, and that's the key. You don't get just general discretion to do whatever you want, because you're in the coastal zone, unfortunately. Uh, it just means that if there are places where state law conflicts with, um, the Coastal Act and the way that the city has chosen to protect Coastal Act resources through its land use plan, then the city is not required to adopt those man, otherwise mandatory elements of state ADU law. Um, so as I mentioned, this is incredibly complicated, there's not a lot of guidance on how Coastal Act, coastal zone cities should interpret this, um, and so we're, we're left with a bit of a gray zone right now, uh, but that's what we've been working through. Um, the, the draft ordinance, as we've proposed, we think balances each of these issues, it includes mandatory elements that are based on state law, where there's no kind of nexus to Coastal Act issues, um, but it also includes some provisions where we believe that protecting Coastal Act resources, uh, can result in a change or deviation from state law. So for instance, the parking proposal that we have is intended to protect beach access by ensuring that people have places to park, um, in order to access the coast, and for that reason, we've deviated from what is otherwise mandatory state law requirements related to, uh, the proposed half-mile radius. Um, I also wanted to mention the, the comment about Measure D certificates and whether those are preempted by state law. So, there's a provision of state law that was read into the public comment about how cities' ADU ordinance cannot, or a growth, uh, a growth measure can't be applied to an ADU ordinance. The Coastal Commission has taken the position that this is an area, in some circumstances, where the Coastal Act does trump that provision. Um, so where you have a growth ordinance that is codified in a local coastal plan, that is a place in which, um, state ADU law does not control, and cities can continue to enforce growth ordinances. It doesn't, hasn't been litigated or anything like that, but there is Coastal Act guidance on that point. Um, so that addresses the question of, of Measure D certificates. Um, I also wanted to address, uh, the comments about, uh, PUD areas, open space reserves, places where we have not traditionally allowed accessory dwelling units. Um, this is a place where state law says, if you adopt an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, it has to provide for the, uh, it has to allow accessory dwelling units in zones that, where single-family residences are currently allowed. Those would be PUD, open space reserve, districts. And so this is a, a question where we may have more flexibility, and, and we're, we can discuss that, um, if, if we can tie, um, the protection of these areas to Coastal Act protections. But in, in general, the, the cut that staff has taken is because these are areas where single-family residences are allowed, uh, we would be proposing to allow ADUs there as well. Um, I think those are my main, oh, junior ADUs. Uh, a comment was made about junior ADUs, um, and this is, junior ADUs, we discussed at the last meeting. Um, junior ADUs are another part of state law that allows, um, cities to, uh, include this sort of special restricted category of ADUs, that, um, have much more limited kitchen facilities, that are required to have a door going into, um, the existing residence, and, and we evaluate, staff evaluated it and included information in the previous staff report, indicating that junior ADUs were sort of a solution, uh, without a problem, and so the state legislature had crafted this new... And so, the state legislature had crafted this new discretionary mechanism for cities to permit junior ADUs, but we didn't view them as necessary. And so, there's no provision in our current code to have a sort of separate category of junior ADUs.
There's a couple more. The topic of the fee for, really, the only fee that we've discussed tonight is the Measure D certificate. And of course, council would have to approve not, not charging that fee and this ordinance will be going to council. I do want to note that city council in a fee study last year approved reduced fees for processing of ADUs in comparison to requiring full-cost recovery fees for just about everything else that goes through the planning shop. They, they made a very strong approach to, to how to support them. The act of preparing and counting ADUs through a Measure D approach is not something that is going to, it's not going to take staff a lot of time. So, this is something that we see as, as quite a ministerial process and thus, that's why we came in with this first approach to it. We also wanted to note on the eight hundred square feet again, this was input that we received from Shute Mahaly reviewing what HCD had. You want to talk about that?
Sure. So, the HCD, which is the state agency that oversees housing law, has come out with a guidance document talking about how cities should be implementing the new ADU ordinance, or new ADU state law. And in it, it talks about how there's sort of these conflicting parts of state law. There's one section that says if you, if a city adopts an ordinance, then the maximum size must be eight hundred square feet or half of the size of the existing unit. And then it also says, oh, but cities are allowed, they have discretion to set maximum and minimum sizes. And so, there was a lot of questions in the city attorney world is, well, is it really eight hundred square feet or, or sorry, twelve hundred square feet? Or is it something else? Do cities have the ability to set a size that's different? And what HCD says is you have cities retain the discretion to set a maximum size that's different than the twelve hundred square feet that's outlined in state ADU law. However, cities cannot impermissibly burden the creation of ADUs by requiring, by setting the maximum size artificially low. And they have sort of blessed the eight hundred square feet number, they've said that specifically in this document, that eight hundred square feet would be reasonable. They've not approved, you know, sort of blessed anything lower than that. Obviously, this is just guidance, but that's, that's why we've taken that direction from them.
And so, I wanted to follow up on that. So, the eight hundred square feet, in our view, was the most conservative approach relative to what we allow right now, which is seven hundred square feet. Furthermore, the, I have lost my train of thought. I'm going to go back to, to this. Occupancy requirement, I do want to note that, that came up tonight in our previous, staff originally assumed we were just going to bring our occupancy requirement forward. That is still something on the table. I am sure that at a hearing with a revised ordinance, that we will, we will notice broadly, you'll, you'll get a lot of input on that whichever way we go. So, think about that in your direction. It's, it's an important bit. It's about the size of the unit. I'll, I'll remember this in a bit. Thank you.
So, I'm sure we all have our, our list of items, questions, comments, so on. John?
So, let me get at some answerable kind of, and, and, because there's a lot of philosophical questions here that we're dealing with and so, I'll kind of wait on that. But, so, I'll go into sort of specifically into the draft that you gave us here and so on, there's no page number. So, on the first page, under number two A, I, the, chapter eighteen thirty-three, I'm just going through.
The code.
The code changes, yeah. Well, it's the first page. It's eighteen thirty-three point zero two zero, review and approval. So, I think, I'm just going to point out some, I think, going forward, some complications that are technical issues and not philosophical points. So, on, on the coastal development permit, number A, on the wholly within existing development accessory units, it, it talks about some, you know, some waivers here. But I, I guess what, what could come up is there may be some people that convert parts of their houses into an accessory dwelling unit and then they do some other remodeling that's really not related to the accessory dwelling unit. And so, I think we kind of need to look at how that works.
We've addressed this in part in section eighteen point three-three point zero six zero, which is listed as combination proposals.
Which, which section? I'm sorry.
Eighteen three-three zero six zero.
Okay. Well, you can, I'm just making this as a, and then if we move forward to, so that we have the stuff with F A, floor area ratio. I think that what the community reacts to, and I guess what I react to in going forward or changing projects, is we have pretty specific ordinances about setbacks and building heights and daylight planes and that kind of stuff. And what that does is it kind of defines what the bulk of the building looks like. So, I think that the floor area ratio, I think that's going to be something that's going to be really a complication. I don't know that we even need that anymore. It theoretically controls how many people live in a building. But there can be all kinds, there's all kinds of buildings that are already built on our coasts that have giant cathedral ceilings and blah, 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 where they say that the floor area ratio is within our limits, but the building is big and, and more massive than, than maybe what our, what, what that's trying to control. And if there's, so for lot coverage is a pretty specific ordinance that we have and if it's a single-family home, I mean, excuse me, if it's a one-story house and that's a particular sort of bulk of a building that goes on there, if it's a two-story building, there's less lot coverage allowed and that changes the bulk of what goes on. So, I don't think floor area ratio should be included at all. So, that's eighteen thirty-three zero four zero five A. Oh, excuse me. No, excuse me. F, F, sorry. Then if I go back to then that same eighteen thirty-three, well, there's no page date. So, it's eighteen thirty-three zero four zero, page one, two, three, four, and it's number D and down under number five.
Architecture?
Yeah, and it's A. I think, so, so it's what it's saying is if what's ever there, whatever you build just has to look like what's there. And I think that shouldn't be, and now, and I'm glad to talk about why and there's a lot of disagreement with me, but I think that's not of value to us. We make reference to our residential design guidelines and that's a real complication, I think. There's, and this could go both ways. We were talking about limiting how much design review is done by any of these projects. And so, I guess the intent of this is, well, if there's a building there and you plunk something else there and if it looks the same, then nobody's going to complain. Well, I disagree. You know, there's lots of plenty terrible-looking or kind of crummy-looking buildings on the coast side here. And it's possible to do another little cottage or whatever that's, or redo some parts of a building that's more attractive. And looking the same is not necessarily a legitimate, I think, way that we ought to approach that. A specific example is if you drive up, going into San Francisco, you take First Street and go up Mission and you go all the, down that street and there's all these Victorian buildings, if you really look at them, none of them are the same colors, none of them are the same style, none of them have any of the same detailing. Some of the buildings within themselves have really completely different kinds of construction. And so, if they had an ordinance that said, well, everything is going to start looking the same, it would have a really different character. And we hear from time to time in these meetings that what's nice about the coast is it's got a whole variety of stuff. And so, anyway, so I'm building the case that I think that point A shouldn't be there at all. It's just, and I know that the downside is if somebody does some cheap kind of crummy-looking thing next to a beautiful house, that's a problem. I'm glad to see that in our draft that everything that's in an existing building, I'm not trying to identify, it really doesn't matter what the sizes really are. I mean, the building's already there and how, how people live there is kind of their problem. I, I think we're going to, philosophically, we're running up a bunch of really difficult issues that I don't know as a planning commissioner how to deal with them. I think that my own personal perspective is it would be disappointing to see the residential neighborhoods turned into a bunch of duplexes. The street I live on, that's happened in a couple of cases. Wasn't done legally necessarily, but it's there. So, there's a lot of cars and a lot of people and it's partly because there's an absentee owner, you know? I mean, there's a lot of issues here that are subtle, that are going to be tough to deal with. And so, the owner occupancy, I, I don't know how we could enforce any of these issues. I mean, that's part of the challenge here is, and some of the public, public comment pointed that out. I mean, if it's, if it's a short-term rental or not a short-term rental, if someone's living there thirty days, is it, you know, their son's living there one day and their mother's living there another day or, you know? Ultimately, I think what we're, at least what I'm concerned about is what's the bulk of the buildings? How does the neighborhood look? And how do we protect the different characters of the different neighborhoods? Some are rental areas and that, that has one character to it. Others are, are neighborhoods where generally families live there and they're, it's a kind of a different character of that neighborhood. And so, to sort of have an ordinance that applies equally to everything, I think, is difficult for us. But I don't, I don't know how we can enforce any of these, like limiting how much, how much, and the public articulated it just as better than I can. Some people want to be dealing with the management of having a hotel room that you rent out every night or by the hour, I don't know. And other people don't want that management challenge and they want to get a lease for a whole year, you know? So, I, I don't know that, I don't know how we can, I think we're going to get really bogged down with that unless we deal with just specifically if we're, if we're allowing more housing, which is what we're trying to do, and not more hotel rooms, then if the ADU is going to have a kitchen, then that's pretty straightforward and we're dealing mostly with the building department and the ordinances we already have with lot coverage and building bulk and mass. And so, I think a lot of this stuff is unenforceable and redundant. And generally, don't disagree, I just think that's a challenging, that's my view from For fees, assuming that the community cooperates with us and they get building permits for everything they do, then they're certainly charged for plan checking and building permits for the planning fees. I, I think we have a long way to go. And I guess I need to say in public that we just finished a project that conforms with all the regulations and made minor adjustments so that internal things fit that score footages and it took four months. We applied in November and we just now got the building permit. And ninety percent of that was the planning process. And it wasn't because the planning department wasn't working hard at getting it all done and it was several thousand dollars in permits. And that's to create an accessory dwelling unit. So, I, we've got a long way to go with what's being imposed on our staff to, to accomplish that. So, I'm encouraging us to get away from the philosophical stuff and just down to specific, if we can do that. I like that we have in the ordinance already that you, if you have a unit with a second dwelling unit, that that can't be sold separately. I think that's really important wording and that's probably more important than the owner occupancy requirement. Thank you.
So, so first I want to say thank you to the public for your, your comments, both those of you who stayed with us and those of you who came, spoke, and left. I think it, I think it was great and I appreciate the chair indulging them the extra time. I think we got our money's worth. So, I, one of the things that really came out of the public comment is this boiling down of the reason we're here, and different people bring different perspectives. I mean, why we're talking about ADUs. One perspective is that we want to provide affordable housing. Another perspective is we want to provide an opportunity for people who own property to have a livelihood, people who buy and sell, who assist people in buying, selling property and improving it to have a livelihood. Many times, those are consistent, sometimes they aren't. And in this case, my understanding is that the reason we're, the council is driving us with respect to this is that we're trying to create additional affordable housing, that that is the reason that we're having this conversation, not, not because there are good people who have good incentives to find a way to really cash in with this. And there's nothing wrong with cashing in on this, but that, I don't think that's the objective of this, of this task. So, while I hope we can accommodate people and there's nothing wrong with that, from my perspective and my values, I'm focused on affordable. And where I see aspects of this that shy away from affordable, I'm going to drive back to try to, try to facilitate that. I also heard from the public tonight and from others over the years that they are concerned about growth. That's what Measure A was about, that's what Measure D was about. And in the LCP planning process, the consequences of growth in terms of distress on our infrastructure, and by this I don't necessarily mean water or the grid or schools, but I'm specifically thinking of congestion, is a source of great agony for many members of our community. And as we go forward with this ordinance, I want to pay as much attention to the impact on congestion as we are on parking, for example. I appreciate that we have a responsibility. And as I understand the, the city attorney's comments with respect to our discretion in light of the fact that we're in the coastal zone, you mentioned coastal resources. Of course, the twin pillars of the Coastal Act are protection of coastal resource and the facilitation of coastal access. And I'm assuming that we have some discretion with respect to both, since you mentioned coastal access in the context. And I lean heavily on that in thinking about how this will go forward. I also understand that the state ordinance with respect to where parking is and isn't permitted suggests that they see mass transit, public suggests that they see mass transit, public transit, as an alternative for people who need to get around to get around. And that's why congestion shouldn't be an issue somehow at the state level. And if we live in San Mateo or Berkeley, you know what? I think they're right. But in Half Moon Bay, they're not right. In Half Moon Bay, as you pointed out, the one, you know, the one or two stops every couple of hours. You know, I tried to take the bus in the morning when I was working at HP. I took the first bus out, and I arranged to take the last bus back. And when you combine the bus trip and the Caltrain and the transit from the Caltrain both ways, I got a seven-hour workday. That doesn't cut it in Silicon Valley. And I don't think that cuts it whether you're, you know, regardless of what your profession is. So I'm really concerned about what I think of as the fiction that somehow being close to a transit stop will eliminate the need for cars. And while I think you've done a nice job of addressing in your draft the thinking about how to manage parking to some extent, I mean, I want to play with it, but at least I see the idea. I feel that the congestion issue is a much bigger issue. It was recognized in the Okinawa Pipeline Project when the Coastal Commission said, you know, your ability to fill that pipe is contention upon relieving a lot of the infrastructure stress. So in a perfect world, we would find a way to make the ADUs connect with the local jobs, you know, the teachers and the firefighters and the, the local employees at the, in the farm co-op or, you know, those kind of people who aren't going to be competing as much with their cars. But if that's, if that's impossible and we just can't do that, you know, you can tell me that, but at least I'd like to see it thought about. And that's why I'm, that's probably one of my biggest concerns. I think that resonates with one of the comments from the public that I think the community has voted for over the past, their impression is that we are regulating growth. And I struggle with the question that Mr. Russell brought up about the competition for Measure D with other sources. And I understand the public purpose of Measure D is to facilitate a gradual increase in growth, sorry, a gradual increase in population. And it certainly hasn't been a problem yet, well, at least maybe since 2002 or 2003, where we've been fresh out of Measure D permits. And as an insurance policy to ensure that we, that we aren't going to grow through an explosion of these kind of units, I personally would like to see it. And if it turns out we have that kind of competition that you mentioned could happen, it might make sense to revisit it. Of course, you know, if, once we've adopted it, I don't know how easy it is to change. So, you know, please help me understand whether this is one of those be careful what you ask for kind of questions. I think the ordinance has, there are a lot of small things that kind of jumped out at me. The PUDs, well, let's, the commercial, let's start with the commercial, the CG, the general commercial and the commercial visitor serving, sorry, commercial general and commercial visitor serving. In the, in the commercial general area, I could see, you know, a use like the Two Worlds concept, since that's largely a two-story area, but not all. I could see, you know, residential units above, and, you know, ADUs could certainly be a part of that. I could see in a visitor-serving area a little less so, since I worry about the Coastal Act prohibition on the competition between visitor-serving and residential. And I want to be sure that we had thought through whether we were creating a feeling that was welcoming to visitors because it was a nice, comfy, you know, quaint, maybe quirky neighborhood like you get in some towns, or whether we're doing something that says, this is our turf and want to be clear on how we manage that. But going beyond those to the PUDs and the open space reserve and the urban reserve does concern me. And I appreciate Jill's clarification with respect to existing development in those areas. I will say that there is, there is a can of worms problem here that is even more of a concern to me because much of the language in the ordinance, as it's drafted, talks about not only accessory dwelling units for existing structures, but also accessory dwelling units for proposed structures. So these are structures that don't exist yet. And if I want to, let's say, build a little place in an urban reserve area or in a, I don't know, a PUD, I could propose some development and then get an approval almost by right without hearings for an accessory dwelling. I don't, I don't think that was the intention, I'm sure of it. But I want to be very clear, you know, I circled, I don't know, six or seven places in the document where we talked about what could be done on lots that contain an existing or proposed single-family dwelling. And I think that, I can't believe that was what was intended, so I'm sure there was another, another explanation. I appreciated the comment, the clarification about the problem of what's required. As I understood it, ATD wants to be sure that we haven't used zoning as a weapon to keep out more affordable housing and that we have a lot of flexibility. As I said in my, my first comment, I want to be sure that we target our thinking about this to do that. I personally feel that if I had to choose between a large number of big box houses or more affordable units, I would choose the affordable units because if I have to have them anyway, that's how I'd rather have the allocation of resources. If I have more flexibility, I'd like to see a little bit of a mix. But at least that's my, that's my take on that. I want to understand whether, you know, how these would be interpreted when ABAG comes back and computes our regional housing needs allocation. My fear is, once again, that, you know, no good deed could go unpunished and that because we did a lot in one term, maybe we get told, oh, good, you can do a lot more next term. And so I want to be sure we're smart about how we're treating that. In a recent CDP hearing, we talked about the challenge of substandard lots. And we need to find a nicer name for that because we're not saying that, that these are bad lots or something like that. They're just, you know, they're smaller, you know, or tiny, nice, nice, you know, cute lots. Or, I don't know, we'll have to find something. But I want, I was hoping, and I think this came up in conversation, that maybe in conjunction with our thinking about those lots that we could maybe tie in some affordable housing. And I think I remember a note as I was reading through it, but when I pulled back up to 50,000 feet, I was struggling to figure out how we could do it. And a lot of those small lots are antiquated lots in PUDs. So I want to draw special attention to the concern that Mr. Ferrera raised with respect to what we do in an area with a lot of small lots. If we create an arrangement by which those, those lots could suddenly have an ADU on them or have a nice little house without much hassle, what is the, what is the impact on our larger planning for that area? If they're antiquated lots in a PUD, for example? Or they're just antiquated lots in an area that hasn't been developed yet? So I want to, I want to be sure we're going into that with our eyes wide open. And I'm sure yours are, but I don't feel like I'm educated enough to know what the plan is yet. I really appreciate the footprint issue that Jill raised with respect to larger footprints creating more drainage during bursty events. I think that's a real concern, certainly something that we need to address in many ways. But certainly one of them is to not make it worse than it already is. Let's see. I appreciated John's remark about FAR. I'm not, I think I disagree, but I'm going to think about what you said because I think that floor ratio is somehow part of the package of what people have come to think about. And I agree that, you know, maybe there's, you know, there are other ways to think about it. Similarly, with your comment about your observation that making it look the same kind of limits us from being able to improve on designs that don't look very good right now. I will say that I'm risk averse, and I think the potential to do something really horrid in an effort to save cost presents greater disutility than the potential for something really beautiful. But that's just my, my opinion. So, and the interaction between these new homes and the conditions of the coastal development permit by which they were approved represent another angle that I think we need, that needs some additional research. So if a home went up and it said, you need to limit, you know, maybe it's next to Anisha, or maybe there's a hazard next to it, or maybe, I don't know, insert your concern here that was addressed as a condition, right? And if the, if the results of the ADU application could be inconsistent with those, what, you know, if someone were concerned about that, would they be complaining about the project not being consistent with the old CDP? Do they have a leg to stand on because it's an ADU? I don't know. And I, I think we're, the public needs to understand that. I also appreciate the efficiency benefits of the administrative CDP, as was discussed. As I understand the Coastal Commission regulations for an administrative CDP, they have an extended appeal time, and they automatically are appealable to the Coastal Commission. That they're, and you can correct me if I'm wrong about that. Maybe this is a good time to.
Sure.
That's okay with the chair?
Administrative CDPs are not automatically appealable to the Coastal Commission. The standard rules about whether something is appealable would apply, whether it's an appeal zone. Instead, administrative CDPs are approved by staff and then could be potentially appealed and/or, so they could be appealed to the Planning Commission or the City Council, or they could be, the Planning Commission itself or the City Council could elect to bring it to that level approval. But it's not, there's no distinction that would make it automatically appealable up to the Coastal Commission. Yeah, that's exactly, exactly right, only if it's in their appeals jurisdiction.
Okay, thanks for the education. I noticed that in the Measure D allowance section of the, of the draft, you mentioned proposal to provide additional points for, under the category, designed for diverse households. If it's diverse but it's not affordable, or is the thinking because it's 800 feet, it's got to be affordable? That, I guess, like, maybe that gets at the crux of my question, which is that in an era of increasing demand for housing in proximity to Silicon Valley and Stanford and San Francisco, it's not hard for you to imagine some Silicon Valley bigwigs saying, you know what? We're going to rent that 800-square-foot place for you to use during the week, and you can go fly back to wherever it is you came from. And that's going to create competition that the guy who needs the affordable housing is not going to be able to compete with. And I appreciate that the goal is affordable. And I don't know what it is we can do to address that, but it concerns me is that we're, I feel like we're in a financial arms race with, you know, where we're bringing an affordable knife to a high-tech gunfight. There was a note about the ordinance allowing property owners to remove any recorded deed restriction related to owner occupancy imposed by the city's existing code. This was the last page online, on page two of three. Maybe I'm the only person who does know, but how do you do that?
May I answer? Thank you. So the, we're using the term deed restriction kind of oddly here. And I, we've continued to do it because I know that that's how the city refers to them. Generally speaking, a deed restriction is something that is imposed by a prior owner on future owners, and there's a sort of relationship that is then codified.
The CCNRs or?
Exactly.
And it's listed in the, in the deed?
Yes.
If you look in the county.
And there's a conveyance, the deed is a conveyance, it has been recorded as part of that. Here, what we're really talking about is not a deed restriction, but a declaration of restrictions, which is also a type of document that you can record that essentially puts future owners on notice of existing city laws. So it's not a deed restriction in the sense that it creates a property, right, related to owner occupancy. It is simply a document that alerts future owners to existing requirements that are imposed by the city. So those are somewhat easier to change, fortunately, if this is the direction the city wants to go. And it would simply be by recording another document rescinding that declaration of restrictions. And so because it's not a true deed restriction, you don't need to get approval from a prior owner or some sort of court order saying that there's, the beneficiary would not be harmed by wiping out this deed restriction. Instead, it's simply a recordation of a new document. Presumably, the person would attach the new ordinance showing this deed restriction can be wiped, and that, that's how you would move forward.
And if someone were to sell the property and do a title search, the title search would show the original restriction and the fact that it had been wiped out. So it'd still be there, but there'd be an update saying it's not really enforced.
That's exactly right.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious. I'll reload for a minute and let, let's go. Thanks for your patience with all this stuff.
Yeah, lots of things, and I'm sure there'll be more things. I kind of took, taken a different tact over here. I think there are two reasons we're here. We're here because the state issued some rules, and we're trying to adapt our code to those rules. And as we've heard from people in the audience, I mean, our, we've had these rules on our books. People could come to the Planning Commission and ask for a permit for an accessory dwelling unit up to the past 700 square feet. So the question is now, is 800? So the issue, I think, is we're, we're trying to think about all the hypothetical things that can go wrong, even though they haven't gone wrong in the past. So the question that I'm trying to think about when I have read through this, are we, in effect, trying to solve problems that aren't there? And through that, there are certain things that have come up. I mean, this, of course, in terms of the hypothetical, is also tied to rental units, Airbnb, because in theory, you have, you have a space that might be more attractive to rent. I mean, people can always rent out a room and do and get money for it. I mean, you know, so, in fact, a lot of people have probably done work in their house that you don't know about that now makes it more attractive. And it's within the four walls, so you have no idea that this has happened. So the, the issue, I guess, going forward is, and I think as Jimmy indicated, do we want to advertise that there's now a rule that tries to encourage lower income? tries to encourage lower income rental space in the form of an ADU? And if, if so, then what did the ordinance say? You know, so I'm, I'm trying to go back onto, on that, that issue. That said, there are some items in here that you asked for comments and so on. I tend to disagree with at least some of my comments that I've heard, that I think an ADU requires a full Measure D. I mean, it's, as someone said, you don't need a water meter and a sewage connection. You're not, in effect, adding the equivalent of a, of a full household. So, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see that changed. I'm sure the, the City Council will take up that issue, but I'm just giving you my view on, on that. As far as the issues that were raised on PUDs and so on, I think it's, Jill, you said if there's a, a house in a PUD right now, I don't think they should be treated any differently than a house that's an R1, R2, or so on. So I mean, that, the question is, if there's more development in that PUD, how should they be treated? And, you know, it seems to me that if we do have an ordinance that, in effect, allows ADUs, then, you know, that rule should also, of course, apply to any new units, but of course, those new units have to meet whatever the criteria is in our building code or zoning code for that zone, or whatever the CCNRs are. So I mean, that, I'm not sure why we're arguing about something that isn't, isn't there at this point in time. Because if there is a rule on ADUs, to me, that would apply to every unit, both ones that are existing and ones that are, are proposed. So, again, I'm not sure we're making a molehill into a mountain, but perhaps I don't under, understand the issue fully on that, but I'm, might be educated. There's also something on, on the proposed ordinance is, trying to think, page one, we're referring to a guest house being exempt as opposed to a house. That's eighteen thirty-three zero twenty B and C. Those two things, when I first read them, I thought they were the same, but then I kind of saw the word "guest house" there. So can you amplify what, what you're trying to get at at that point?
Sure. This is a place where state law is making it more complicated than I believe it needs to be. The Coastal Act regulations contain, or outline exemptions for CDPs. And they, those Coastal Act regulations treat additions to existing residential structures differently than they treat additions to guest houses. And I don't really know why, but that's what they do. And so, we have created two different sections, one to deal with the standard additions to residential structures, and then one to deal with the other exception that applies to additions to guest houses. There's different exceptions to those exemptions, and so that's why we've called them out differently.
Thank you. Other things that at least came to mind when I read through this is, you know, trying to control something that's rented for thirty days or more or not, I mean, what's, what's considered a lease compared to rental? I think there's a real issue on that. I'm not sure what the answer is, but I think that's something that needs a lot more study, because it's something that's gonna be very hard to control in the future. For example, the city doesn't get any revenue from a lease for thirty days or more, I don't think. I mean, the property only pays, pays its taxes, but there's no TOT on, on something like that. So there, I think there's some issues there that I'd kind of like to see how some of the other towns and cities kind of treat that, if there's any, any way to really en, enforce something like that. Other issue that I kind of took issue, well, had a question on, trying to figure out how to deal with. So, if, if I convert my garage into a ADU, which means I can't put my cars in the garage. So now, there's two cars outside my garage, which most of my neighbors do, because their garages fill up with junk or something like that. But then if there's an ADU, there's a third car option. And to me, you know, if my driveway is long enough and there can be tandem parking, there's no problem. But if that car has to park on the, on the street in several areas, that's, that's an issue here. So, you know, I'm, I'm trying to figure out whether or not, for example, requiring the owner of an ADU to, in effect, put a, a pad on the property for that third car, so that the car would not be parked on the street. Now, the question is, okay, there isn't any room for a, for a pad, what options are there? I mean, I, there's some rules that you say that the state issued on parking, but then again, we have some, some options here too. And it seems to me, if there's not any parking on the site for a third car, that might be a, a way that we can say, "Hey, there's just no room for an extra two people to live here, because there isn't any parking." So that's, again, an issue that I'd like to kind of raise as far as some control that we might have going forward. See anything else that I flagged? Those are kind of the main ones. Now, again, you had some questions for us that I'm not sure that we all, all address, but I'm sure there are also some other questions and comments by the.
I'm ready to go again.
So, are you ready for more?
I'm ready to go again.
Can I?
Oh.
I overlooked one of my notes on eighteen thirty-three dot zero four zero, number D three, building height. So I noticed that for a one-story detached dwelling unit, should be no more than thirteen feet high. Not sure how we came up with that number, but I just did a quick little sketch here. If we had a little twelve-foot wide place, and it's a one-story building, so that means it's about nine feet from the ground to that. And if you did a twelve-twelve roof on that, you know, made it kind of a cute, nice little space in there, it would be fifteen feet high.
So, this is in our existing code. This is, this, both those building height, the thirteen feet and twenty-two feet in height, come specifically out of the existing ADU ordinance. Certainly could be revisited, but that's where it comes from.
Should, should, yeah. That's the limitation, because there's already for one and a half and two-story building height limits, so I don't, I don't think we need it for a one-story building. We don't need a building height.
Sorry, can you repeat what you just said?
I don't think we need a, for a one-story building, we don't need a building height limitation. It's covered in other parts of our planning lot dimensions. And I know something that's going to come up is all of the daylight plane. Because when we start having side yard easement, this is the wrong word, relief from side yard setbacks, then there's some other kind of overlapping stuff that need to be a little more carefully thought through, yeah.
I don't know, thanks. So, yeah, a short list. So first, the Coastal Act requires coastal development permits in a variety of circumstances, and you've talked about development as one of them. In general, there's also a discussion about, in the Coastal Act, about intensification of use. And that, it doesn't, it's a little bit more extensive than development. And I just wonder if the rate, the state, you know, if the statute has clarified that, that providing these ADUs does not constitute an intensification of use and therefore would not require a CDP, is that true, or is it silent?
The statute is certainly silent on this. We are planning to discuss this issue with the Coastal Commission staff. We flagged it already as a, as a point for discussion, so next time we come back to you, I think we should have more.
Yeah, I do have some reservations about that. And, you know, that doesn't mean that administrative CDPs might not be a way to address it, but I, you know, it's a slippery slope if you say it's not an intensification of use. What else is not an intensification of use? I think it may have come up in passing, but I believe the, the Matauchi subdivision has the main houses and it has the guest houses. Someone was talking about the guest houses earlier tonight as though it didn't, in general, the guest houses might not have full facilities like kitchens. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure those guest houses are flush and hot and cold running kitchens. And so I gather, in Matauchi, we'd be saying, "You can get an ADU on the guest house and you can get an ADU on the main house for a total of," no, just one. So I want to get clarity on that.
We will clarify that, but we were very clear that you get one ADU per parcel.
Okay, and let's see, in the CVS zone, we just, last, at the last Planning Commission, we heard, we, we approved a change in use that allowed six apartments above commercial, close to Frenchman's Creek. Oh, sorry, close to, relax, it's, it's not close to Frenchman's Creek. Close to Pilositos Creek. And I, just as a case study, how many ADUs would we be allowing in that CVS area? Let's assume it's CVS, Commercial Visitor Serving. If they could manage to hollow something out of their existing structure.
Ask the question again?
Okay, so I'm thinking of the Zabala House?
Yeah, so it has to go with a single-family home, so there's no, that property wouldn't qualify for an ADU.
Okay, so there's nothing in that, in that, in Commercial Visitor Serving that is not, because I thought of it as a multifamily.
So, no, so, so let's be, let's clarify that. The Commercial Downtown, which is the zoning district where the Zabala House is located, and Commercial Residential, which is a very small zoning district on the east side of downtown, is a transition zone between Main Street and single-family residential neighborhoods behind it. Both allow accessory dwelling units now as conditional uses associated with single-family homes. That, the whole, the whole ticket here is that you have to have a single-family home as the base use on the property. Now, I do want to go to CVS, because it's interesting. The Commercial General and the Commercial Visitor Serving zoning districts, in your existing code, as it is sitting today, allow accessory dwelling units as accessory uses to single-family homes, and in those cases, they're permitted by right. Now, there aren't very many single-family homes in the CG or the CVS zoning districts, so I don't, I don't think this is gonna cast a big opportunity for, for adding ADUs there. Where, where what we're proposing in this first draft ordinance is really different is easing the process in the Commercial Downtown or the Commercial Residential Zones, where there are some single-family homes remaining and not requiring the use permit. Would still require a coastal development permit, dependent upon whatever process you're, you're going to be looking at. But we're recommending that a use permit is really not necessary.
So, so let me just explore the extent of my misunderstanding. So we have, we listed R3 zoned areas, for example, which I think of as, you know, multiple units on a lot. We're saying that, that only single-family residences in an R3 zoning. So if it's, if they've developed it as an eight-plex, there's not an ADU contemplated for that?
We believe Section eighteen thirty-three oh five oh provides the boundaries on this for ADUs being associated with single-family development and one permitted per.
No, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
And we have proposed in the draft ordinance to allow an ADU in conjunction with duplex or triplex.
This is our, this is our, this is our density bonus thing that we're still working on. But it wouldn't be one per unit.
Yes, it would be one per lot.
Okay.
But that was, we're, we're trying to deal with that very special case I was talking about earlier, where duplex developer may be looking to invoke a density bonus, and we really don't have a reasonable way to build out that kind of property with, with more of a apartment-style development. We would rather see a small cottage in the back, for example. It would be more appropriate, so I apologize. That, that was that one little thing. But otherwise, one house, one ADU.
Okay. Yeah, I'll think about that, so thank you for clarifying. There was a section where we were talking about staff having timely processing of application. I think there was a hundred and twenty-day period. And I'm assuming that you counted back, so that if the item got pulled to the Planning Commission, we wouldn't get made irrelevant by the Permit Streamlining Act. Is that correct? Or maybe the right way to ask is, please make sure that, that we don't get hoisted by our own petard because we haven't acted timely?
So the action would be within a hundred and twenty days, and that's at a staff level. Then it would move on to an appeal, which usually falls without.
I see, so the decision of the Planning, if two of, if a third of the commission, that's two of us in a five-member group, were to ask the thing to come forward, it would not represent a permit streamlining issue because the decision had been taken at the administrative level?
We will look into that further and make sure.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for clarifying.
Then, we know that in, several Planning Commissioners over the years have pointed to informal boarding houses. So informal is a nice word of saying unpermitted. And as we pursue an ADU program, I think that there will be some interest in seeing whether those, there's an incentive to change the density in those informal homes. Is there any amnesty or some other model that we have in mind that says, "Let's, you know, all sing kumbaya and get on the same page," or are these just completely separate actions? Whether we do code enforcement on these high, high-intensity units that exist in some parts of town independently from the ADU work? And the answer can be, "I don't know," or "I haven't thought about it," or "it's hard."
I've been studying our boarding house definition and where it's allowed recently, and despite that, I, I don't know what the answer, so I need to, I need to take a look at this. Boarding houses are not allowed in the R1 or the R2 zoning districts and.
Yeah, I, I, I'll leave it there for now. I just wanted, didn't know if there were, so if we're still gestating, that's fine, but I hope we get there. I understood what you said about sprinklers. When I read the text, I didn't understand it. You know, I, it said if, if sprinklers are required, they're required in the ADU. If the sprinklers aren't required, that didn't give clarity to me that maybe the house was built at a time when they weren't required, and now they might be as part of the zoning ordinance. So that's probably just me trying to read it to the nth degree. There was a section that was talking about the provisions in the event that the unit was not. unit was not directly accessible from a street. When is a unit not directly accessible from the street?
Um, so this could happen, uh, maybe not in Hafnun Bay, but in other jurisdictions. So for instance, um, my condo in San Francisco could potentially have an ADU in the backyard, but it would not be directly accessible from the street because my house fronts entirely on the width of the lot. Does that make sense? So that's a, that passageway provision is a requirement of state law for it to be in there.
I see.
Um, so they're anticipating a circumstance that may not happen here, frankly, um, but that's the, that's the situation.
Okay, so this is a case of the country mouse not understanding. Very good.
Not at all.
Um, let's see, parking in the setback seemed to be a way of addressing some of the concerns I just will mention. Uh, we have a fair number of seniors, a few people who are disabled. I want to be sure we don't run afoul of the ADA. Lots of references to, um, preventing the conveyance of an ADU separately from the single-family in the, uh, in the text, and I appreciated that. Um, I, I would like to see that remain. And I, and I will say that, um, your comments resonated to me about the concern of absentee landlords. Um, you know, it, I'm not suggesting that it's a legion problem, but, you know, we certainly see a fair number of acquisitions of property, um, that don't, that end up being rented out, and it's not a far, it's not a great leap of imagination, um, that we could go there. So I'd like to give some thought, um, to how we might, uh, ohay, I think, uh, his concern about that. I don't think he's the only one who might feel that way. Thanks for being so patient with my comments.
Just had one more question, I guess, and I think I brought this up last time. Is there any prohibition of getting a eight-hundred-square-foot mobile home parking adjacent to my house and calling that an ADU? I'm, I'm, I'm curious, I mean, it's kind of.
So, uh, the state law, the way the state law sort of addresses this is it says that a manufactured home is an ADU, um, but in order to qualify as an ADU in that circumstance, you would have to take, it couldn't remain street legal, essentially. You'd have to turn in your, uh, registration that allows it to be driven on, on highways and attach it to a foundation and comply with all requirements related to setbacks and other, um, building standards.
If it was a manufactured home, put it on a, a, a foundation and connect it to water and sewage, it would be considered a qualified ADU, am I correct?
That, that's correct, in, in general.
I'm just trying to see whether, if it's something we, uh, want to encourage or not. I don't want to encourage it, but I'm trying to think, is there any way that, uh, I mean, from an archi, architectural standpoint, will it conform with the existing structure? Uh, and if it doesn't, can we say no? I mean, there's a, an item in there that.
So that, that's why that, um, objective design criteria was included in, in this code is anticipating that we may have.
So there's discretion then if somebody says away?
Because we have no, we're not allowed to have discretionary design review. And so if, if we don't have any objective, um, standards of matching or anything, you could have that manufactured home in the backyard as long as it met setbacks and lot coverage and all the other things that we would talk about for any other cottage-type ADU, um, that would be okay.
So if the single-family home looked like a mobile home, I guess, how many times has that happened?
Since, since you indirectly pointed that at me, isn't it correct, I, I think what, let's just talk about is that, um, you're not allowed to live in a car or a trailer or a RV and call that an accessory dwelling unit. You know, if it's, if it's a licensed street vehicle, then if it's got wheels on it, you can't, you know, we don't really count that as an accessory dwelling unit. That's a different kind of enforcement issue. And I, I think there's a lot of confusion about manufactured housing and what they look like and that kind of stuff, so I think that's, um, we've got better ways to address that. But I do have, Commissioner Benjamin did bring up something that really sparked my interest. Make, make sure I understand this correctly. Uh, in our zoning for the, uh, general commercial district, especially the central core of the town, my recollection is that half of the ground floor, only, only half of the ground floor can be residential. And the other half has to be commercial usage. That's our code, and I don't think we've changed that code in the commercial district. So there are, there are a lot of older houses that exist, whether or not there are somebody living in the house. There, there are some properties in our commercial zone district that, that are houses, they were originally single-family houses. And what I'm kind of hearing here, and I hope I'm not triggering an idea for somebody because it's financially a pretty good idea, is if somebody buys up one of these older houses and puts an accessory dwelling on, unit on it because it's allowed to be done in a, a commercial district, then all of a sudden they own a duplex, and, and they're going to get a lot of money just selling that residential property compared to what the value of it is as a commercial property, because commercial properties are only worth what the revenue brings in for that property. So that, I, I think we, before we just blanketly say that the, at least the downtown commercial district, that this accessory dwelling unit applies to it, we really need to take a closer look at that. And I know that at, at least the Planning Commission level, of course, the general plan update, which isn't happening next week, we're looking at a more specific plan for downtown and maybe even a different kind of a zoning district here to allow mixed use and more vibrant, but we're not nearly ready to. I, I would think that this ordinance we're looking at now is going to be implemented way before we get to that.
I would just add one comment that, um, e, even if you could add an ADU in that circumstance, and it depends on whether it meets the required, requirement, other requirements for the zone, it could never be sold as a duplex, meaning you could never sell the ADU and the house as two separate units. Um, it would, all ADUs are required to remain in the same ownership.
It, it came forward, this is a suggestion a while ago, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, that, um, in the general commercial district, we start allowing, um, residential uses, single-family homes on the ground floor, and that's, uh, for me, for our town, that, that petrifies me because the value of a single-family lot here and on the coast is really high compared to the value of a property zoned for commercial use. And so I see that that's an opportunity to buy up these older houses. Well, I just see that it's, how does that help the, i, i, improve the density of our downtown district with mixed-use residential and commercial usage, which is a different density and a different complexion than all of the residential neighborhoods? Yeah, so I just encourage us to look more carefully at that ordinance, and, and I, because I see that as possible.
Okay, Jill and Sarah, again, you had a list to start. Do you, would you want any feedback or any more comments, uh, anything we did not address that you wanted us to?
So Sarah and I were going to click through all the topics and make sure that we have feedback, but we recognize we didn't get any input on, well, we got some input, but it was tangential for parking. Um, I think we got a little bit of input on review process, and we noted a few things we need to look up. Uh, we've talked a bit about Measure D certificates, and again, there's a couple of things we're going to take a look at. Zoning districts, I, I think we covered that well. I understand that the addition, the add-on districts, the concerns that were expressed, and, um, I think both of us have already thought about ways of dealing with that. I don't know what she's thinking, but my IDs are great, yeah. Um, size of unit seemed pretty comfortable, didn't hear any real concerns there. Occupancy is, is a tough topic, and I, I really, at your first study session, thought this was going to be just something you'd bring forward in the public or is really uncomfortable with it, so, you know, I, I feel like this is one that's going to be important to our community. I'm not really sure what a other option would be. It's kind of, you do it or you don't, and you're right, it's hard to enforce, which is the existing condition.
One other option, um, is, it seems like the owner occupancy, um, concerns are in part related to short-term rental, and so it may be that we address owner occupancy, sort of vacant landlords that step through our short-term rental ordinance and not try and address it through ADUs.
All right, um, there's short-term rental, um, members of the public concerned about existing condition and whether or not we might grandfather the very few that we think we have. I, I think this is really limited in, in how many are functioning this way legally, paying their TOT, and, um, understanding that the intent of this, this work is for affordable housing, we, we'd be very concerned if this cast a, a bigger, uh, swoop through, through town, but we don't think it does. Um, okay, parking, um, we had this east and the west. The comment from, um, Chair tonight, Deman, about, uh, what do I do with my parking when I convert my garage, and that little codes section is, um, straight out of state, state code. One thing I wanted to make sure that everyone in the room grasped fully is that if we don't update our ordinance, um, we're at risk of being kicked into the state code, which is much, much more liberal than what we brought to you, so, um, we just want to be careful about noting that and, um, why we're, we're trying to be careful. We, and we will come back with more, uh, specifics on what was discretionary and what's mandatory, but we, I think we, I think you covered it pretty well, and I think we covered it really well in this study session at the last meeting.
So you, you're, you're saying that parking is a mandatory, that the, the wording of the parking is mandatory in the, in the state rule?
And that specific section that you were, uh, raising concerns about, about replacement parking for when you convert your garage into an ADU, this language is almost directly out of state law. Um, I, we have not thought, thought in detail about whether this section m, might be modified based on Coastal Act resources, and we'll give some thought to that over the course of this next interim period. And that in part may depend on what we do with this part, the more general parking requirements.
But we'd like a little more input, if we could get some.
So I appreciate the challenge of east versus west, the way you kind of laid it out as west represents more of a coastal access framework. Um, you know, I, I guess there are enough, you know, either section that any commissioner could probably safely live within the public generally exception to comment on this, so I'm going to take a big leap and go for that. Um, you know, I do believe that, um, state beach parking, state beach access, coastal access is limited to some extent by the amount of parking that is available, but also by the quality of the parking that is available, as I have commented on in other coastal development permits. There are, um, people who have a hard time getting here because mass transit isn't very good, people who would be afraid to bring their electric car because they don't know that they can get it charged and get back home reliably. And so I take a pretty expansive view of what constitutes coastal access, and it may be, it may well be that requiring, at least in some of these neighborhoods, uh, an additional parking space in exchange for that is one way, but perhaps not the only way that coastal access could be accommodated. Um, and I, you know, in the Zabala House case, we talked about, you know, provisioning for electric vehicles. Um, I, I don't know if there's an option, you know, sort of a, an out-of-the-box alternative here. You know, personally, I'm, I'm content with it as you've proposed, and I don't have a better idea to hand you, but I'll think about it and I'll, I'll email you if something pops up. And for the record, I'll also give you a copy of my comments. There were a lot of little typos, so, um, I'll be sure that that's in your hands before we leave tonight. Hope that's enough because that's all I got.
On my first read-through, one of my questions was, what's with the east and west parking? And, and I thought your description was great, and, and I think just from a facts point of view, parking, on-street parking is a lot more difficult west of Highway One compared to everything east of Highway One. Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, just for the, uh, record, I guess we, uh, did receive comments from, uh, our chair, uh, and I don't have to read those for the record, or do I? Uh, I guess I could, okay, Chairman Hernandez says that the language in 18.33.090 strikes me as a little too broad and, and ambiguous. They need to be more precise so that we don't invalidate and otherwise legitimate deed restriction out upon a second dwelling unit or primary unit for other reasons than, uh, compliance with this chapter. Also strikes me as putting deed restriction on an ADU for other reasons down the road. Number two, in previous versions, 18.33.070, Section Seven, there was nuance or nuisance language. I'd like to see this included and beefed up so the city has a right to demolish such structures. Three, I did not see any restrictions on short-term rentals, which is okay. And Vice Chair Holt also had a comment. I reviewed the draft ordinance and staff report. I am supportive of the ordinance as written and appreciate the work that has been put into it. I'm glad to see that ADUs would be subject to Measure D certificates, but appreciate the balance of eliminating fees to not burden the ADUs.
One other thought about parking, um, and that was, in the areas that are Circle Two of them, the ones at the north and the south, I think are, uh, they are, include areas where there is a nighttime permit parking program, and, uh, it seems like there's an interaction here. There's an implicit awareness, I think, in that program that the on-street parking is a resource that guests can use, and that has the potential to interfere with coastal access. That was why the Coastal Commission reviewed it, and I want to be sure that we're getting consistent treatment across the, across the group. Thank you. Thank you.
It's now time for the director's report.
Indeed. So just wrapping up, we're going to have a revision on this ordinance. And we're going to figure out how long this is going to take us and update you. But if you have written comments, please get them to me if you can this week. It would be really helpful. We're going to get back to the short-term rental ordinance as soon as possible after that. All right, director's report. You have, we've received correspondence regarding the Surf Dunes Beach PUD preliminary application from the Committee for Green Foothills and the Sierra Club. It was addressed to me and asked to be forwarded to City Council. And the city clerk is taking care of that, but I thought you would like to have this as well. So you've got that. And we'll make sure the other two commissioners get a copy of this. Planning Commission email addresses have been established. You have a packet before you tonight. It has your login instructions and email use policy. This is pursuant to the bylaws that were established a few months ago now, quite a few months ago. It took a while to, to get this set up there. We are going to, in the next couple of weeks, move all of our communications with you, all the city communications, to these city email addresses. And they are to be used for all your city correspondence. So we can talk about that more next time. Hopefully, all of you will be here and Heather can go over some of the, the key points of, of those policies. So we are working also, remember that wonderful table that you used to get with all the projects on it? We've been working on that and we're coordinating with Public Works for a better way to present the status of private development applications as well as infrastructure projects and the like on our website. So you, you're going to see that in the next few weeks and we'll let you know when that goes up. Agenda forecast, May 8th, we're noticed for 32 Jenna Lane and for a temporary use permit that I'm planning to approve. We need to announce that to you for, this is the, for the golf course. They do this temporary use every year for the Navy SEALs event and some other events. And it involves tents and flagpoles and the like. You see this, you saw this last year. For May 22nd, we need to make sure we bring the draft, well, hopefully it'll be pretty firmed up, capital improvement program to you. This comes to you every year for general plan conformance statement. You saw this last year. This, this is, coincides with the budget cycle. We have a, an application in for a sign program. We haven't had one in a long time, so I just bring it up. This is for the Best Western Property and Cameron's Inn, which is coming along, trying to, trying to work to their final certificates of occupancy. They have a ways to go. We've got quite a few big projects going on in the background, including the Highway 1 North Signalization Project at Terrace and a few others that are in environmental review. And so I think we're going to have a little, as those are wrapping up, a little lull in private development review. You had a bit of a flurry of it, clearing off a chunk of Scott's Dust. So this will be perfect timing for us to get moving on local coastal program chapters that the subcommittee's been working on, and we'll, we'll start doing that. Community Development Director decisions. Today I approved a coastal development permit exemption for a city project to repave parking lots for Poplar, Agcoq and City Hall. They are predominantly going to just improve the surface and restriping will incorporate really important upgrades to ADA requirements. We're also going to consolidate the amazing array of signage at the Poplar Beach parking lot. So it's not going to be perfect, but there might be like half of them that we don't need anymore. So we're working on that. On May 2nd, we have a director hearing for 412 Casa del Mar. It's an after-the-fact coastal development permit for a family room addition. This is a single-family home. A couple of things regarding City Council. We let you know last time that an appeal for the Railroad Avenue project had gone forward on April 17th. Council denied that appeal. And three of you came to the ethics training. Thank you very much. We'll get the online training information to the other two members. May 1st, City Council has their retreat. And I believe it starts at 10:30. It's in the Agcoq Building. There's a couple more things. I'll, I'll wait till our next meeting to, to discuss. I think that's enough for tonight. And thank you for the really in-depth discussion on this first draft ordinance. We appreciate it very much.
Right, next we have Planning Commission Communications.
I should just report out, Rick and Jill and I met at the LCP, as the LCP Subcommittee, working on a couple of documents. The project work continues. No work product to report out at this time. I should also point out that I'm iffy for the, that next meeting because of surgery on May the 2nd. So we'll see where I am. I'll be hobbling if I make it.
I have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
Second. Aye.
Thank you.